Close to seven o'clock, is it okay to start your public hearing? I mean, we're ready to go. All right, say Terry's not here tonight, he's got hip surgery, so he's not laid up, so...
He called in and wanted an excuse and I requested, hip surgery was something he can...
That was...
Yeah. Little excuse him for.
Do you remember what happened the last time you had hip surgery? You got elected chairman?
That's right.
That's right, you guys just more or less said it.
We elected him chairman while he was in the hospital having hip surgery.
Okay, well call this public hearing to order then, and Rick, will you read the notice of public hearing?
Notice of public hearing, please take notice that an application has been made by Joel and Tricia Betcher, P.O. Box 191, Spring Grove, Minnesota, 55974, for conditional use permit to build a dwelling on less than forty acres in an agricultural district, Section 14, Subdivision 1, Subsection 10 in Black Hammer Township on the following premises to wit, southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, the southwest quarter of Section 1 Township 102 North, Range 7 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, containing ten acres, more or less in Houston County, Minnesota. Said applicant standing and making applications are as fee owners of said described land. A hearing on this application will be held at the historic courthouse, Commissioner's Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, 55921 at 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 25th, 2014. All persons having interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard relative to the granting or denying of said application. Houston County Planet Commission by Bob Scanlon, zoning administrator, advertised September 10th, 2014. Um, Bob's, the reason I'm here, Bob's at a zoning conference, and so you're just gonna have to kind of bear with me a little bit here. The Belches here, like I said, are building a house on a ten acre parcel. This would be the first house on that forty. Um, I went through and they do have their erosion control plan that has been, um, developed. It's been signed, looked at and signed by the SCS. Uh, septic system has been, uh, borings have been taken, designed, and that's all been approved. This is off of a public road, a township road on a Denny Road. I guess that's...
Okay, do you have anything to add, Joel, do you wanna, are either one of you? Okay, Tricia, go ahead. Okay. Uh, any questions from the commission members?
Who did you purchase this property off of? Have you owned it for a while, or?
We've owned it since last, um, September, and we purchased it from Forest Rapid.
When do you plan to start?
Plan to start in October.
October, huh? And you've got your driveway all figured out, how to get up in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We finished himself on his own and looked at it and said that it was okay for coming around the corner and stuff with the buses or whatever, so...
Yeah, and then you've talked to township about getting off the township road and all that?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Is there anyone here that wants to comment on this? Would you please, uh, come forward, sir, and say...
My name is Wayne Hood.
Yeah, you can come up, you can come right up here and state your name.
And I have a hundred and nineteen acres that is next to theirs.
Excuse me, just a minute, but what is your name, sir?
Wayne Hood.
Wayne Hood, okay, all right, go ahead, sir.
I'm in the northeast, of the northeast of Section 1.
Okay.
And, uh, I, uh, am here to suggest that the conditional zoning permit be granted, 'cause it's, for sure, is the highest and best use of that particular piece of property.
Okay.
And there's, it'll never be forty acres. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And sir, you want to come forward and... And your name, sir?
I'm Dave Galloway.
Dave Galloway, okay.
And I live on 89 1411th Drive.
Okay.
And my wife and I, we have concerns, because when we bought our property out there, we assumed that, because they're all the little parcels are divided up into hunting parcels, that, um, you know, nobody's gonna build, build houses out there. And as usual agricultural land, our property, or the housing part of our property is lined up right along the road. It gets bad in the fall when your hunters are out there, they're gonna accept it, and that's, you know, we know. But now we're talking about somebody else coming in there, they don't have forty acres, and, um, you know, we're concerned about a liability value to our property, traffic, big things, traffic.
Now, how far down the road do you live from there?
You live past their place to the...
Before.
Before it?
Yeah. I mean, like, we're like right on the road.
You're on, you're on the old, uh, Berry Farm?
Yeah.
Well, the way we, zoning laws are set up, I mean, you can build a dwelling, if there's no dwelling on a forty acres, you're available to build a house on it. That's just the way the laws are set up.
So I guess we said to come in and express your concerns, and we came in and expressed our concerns.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's... Any, any questions, Mr. Galloway? Any comments? Rick, do you have?
I mean, I looked at the site, I mean, uh, I was on the site doing the borings, I think it was Brett, the new guy, did the borings on there. And I took a look at where the house was gonna be set, um, it's just set off the road, I mean, it's, I thought it was a nice location and everything, um, set in kind of into the woods, and it's, it's fairly a nice, you know, it's a little gradual slope, but not really a steep slope or anything, but I was just, I guess that's my opinion, but...
This looked, this map looks like it's pretty much wooded, it isn't crop land?
It is wooded.
It is all?
Their property is wooded, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
How many, like, hunting parcels are there, around there, that you're talking about?
There's a lot.
Down that road?
I mean, yeah, it's, it's, you go all over the places.
But it's all private?
There's twenties, or tens, and fives, and...
But it's all private property, yeah? There's no state land there?
No.
Yeah.
And see, and I'm just wondering, what happens in a, you know, oh, the Mathissons want a little extra money, and they say, oh, sell out the ten acre section of their property, and somebody else says, sells a five or ten acre section, you know, and...
But see, if you build a house, there's only one house per forty acre, quarter, quarter. So you're gonna be limited to how many houses can go down there, 'cause there's only one house per quarter, quarter.
Yeah, and if this court, this house takes, this forty acres could be split up into four, ten acre parcels, and it's, no more houses will go on that forty acres.
And so it's, it's gonna be a limited number that ever could be built down that road.
Yeah, what happens with the other properties out there, then, people will decide...
If their land is in this quarter, quarter, and they built, they can't build, no.
What about if they're a different quarter, quarter?
Well, yeah, if it's a different quarter, quarter, yeah, different forty, and there's no house on it, then possibly they could build there, too.
You could have fifty houses on that?
No, there's not fifty forties down that road.
Well, the thing is, there's requirements of the type of ground that you put it onto, not all ground. If you wanna put it on flat ground, you need to have the forty acres, but if you go to what we consider non-farm, or, uh, types, four, five, six type soils, and that's what we go by, if it goes onto, and that's what this thing, where they're putting this house is on a class four soils, you can go smaller, to a ten acre, or down to a minimum of one acre, if you want to.
But it's gotta be woods, it can't be farmland.
Farmland is protected.
See, you can go down to one acre, but you, you take away the housing rights for that forty acres, that quarter, quarter, you understand that, yeah?
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's only one house per quarter, quarter.
So, my question is, then, Frick, do you owns, you know, two hundred and fifty acres or something, he can't start selling off his farmland?
Forty acres at a, at a time, or there could be a house on it?
If it's flat ground, I mean, you know...
Yeah.
And you have to have an access, you know, off the ro, off of a road to that?
See, we also require a hundred and fifty foot road frontage on a, on an existing public road for non-farm dwellings, which this is considered non-farm. So, I mean, like the forty behind it, if it's la, or it doesn't have the road frontage, and they have bought ten acres, it's gotta have the road frontage, too. So, I mean, it's, and that's to protect townships.
So they don't start having roads way back in the woods yet to maintain, you know?
I guess I don't have much else to say.
I think that you'll find that there won't, there can't be, just, there just can't be a lot of homes built down there. It's one, just figure up how many forty acres with a hundred and fifty foot frontage would be available, and you'll go down that road and count them, there may not be that many.
I got a question, how many acres you had?
About twenty.
Twenty. You don't, you got a house on it?
Yeah, we bought, well, it's left of our, it's, it's divided off the Berry Farm.
Yeah, I, I realize, but, you know, I mean, you know, I guess they got the right to enjoy the country like you do, too.
Most of, most of the land around you is, is Fricky Farms that are owns it, or something like that, am I correct on that?
Yeah, Fricky and the Mathissons, they got a company out there. Any other questions, though, is there something?
I'm good.
Anyone else here have a comment on this application?
If you have any questions, would you want to name out there, with Neil and Martha Matheson?
You wanna come forward, yeah?
That way we can have it on the tape and we can have a record of it.
And your name, ma'am, is?
Martha Matheson.
Martha Matheson.
And it has Neil's with me.
Okay.
We think they would be a great addition to our community out there. Anyway, Neil and Joel have known each other for many years, and he hunts out there, and we're pretty excited about it. So is there any questions that we can answer that would help get it approved?
No. You're verifying, you're upstanding citizens, huh? Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Matheson.
Okay, any other questions? Does anyone else have a comment to make on this application? Okay, um, Rick, do you wanna read the findings, the criteria?
Criteria for granting conditional use permits. Findings of fact, planning commission shall not recommend a conditional use for, unless, permit unless they find the following. Number one, does the proposed use conform with county land use plan? Two, does the applicant demonstrate a need for the proposed use? Three, will the proposed use degrade the water quality of the county? Four, will the proposed use adversely increase the quantity, quality of water runoff? Five, are the soil conditions adequate to accommodate the proposed use? Six, have potential pollution hazards been addressed and have standards been met? Seven, are adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities being provided? Eight, are adequate measures being taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use? Nine, are facilities being provided to eliminate, eliminate any traffic congestions or traffic hazards which may result from the proposed use? Ten, will the conditional use be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted? Eleven, does the establishment of the conditional use impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area? Twelve, are adequate measures being taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to like neighboring properties will result? Thirteen, is the density of the proposed residential development greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood, or greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district? Fourteen, is the intensity of the proposed commercial industrial development greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses, or greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district? Fifteen, are site-specific conditions and such other conditions established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, and morals, and general welfare?
Okay, any comments on the, on the findings, the criteria?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see no problem with the criteria, so I, will we recommend to the county board that we grant this commission?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this application by Charlie, and second by Rich. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, Rick, will you explain?
Okay, um, the county board, we need to run this on their agenda, which, uh, they will be meeting October 7th. So, all of what they have, this board has went through, the county board will get all that information, and they'll make that determination, and a final approval on October 7th. So, um, I don't know what time Bob has got it, but Bob will take it in. So, after October 7th, then, uh, that determiner will be made, should be good to go.
Does she need, uh, press line? Why don't you give it back to the, to the signature? Can I tell you?
You have it?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any other questions on it, how that works?
Here you go.
Yep. Okay, our second public hearing, uh, is at 7:15, and regards a Hidden Bluffs Resort. Rick, will you read?
Okay.
Yeah, will you read the findings?
Notice of public hearing, please take notice that an application is made by Hidden Bluffs, Inc., 23645, Clubhouse Drive, Rapid City, South Dakota, 57702, for conditional use permit to expand a campground, Section 14, Subdivision 1, Subsection 6 in Black Hammer Township, on the following premises to wit, the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter, Section 29, subject to right-of-way easement, recorded in the office of the county recorder of said county of Houston and state of Minnesota, all in Township 102, Range 7. Said applicant standing and making applications are as fee owners of said described lands. Hearing on this application will be held at the historic courthouse, Commissioner's Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, 55921 at 7:15 PM on Thursday, September 25th, 2014. All persons having interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard relative to the granting or denying of said application. Houston County Planet Commission by Bob Scanlon, zoning administrator, advertised September 10th, 2014.
Okay, any further information?
This one, you guys got this one, right?
Yeah.
My understanding, is there another five?
We're gonna add five sites that are...
Why don't you, why don't you come forward, sir? Yeah. And, and what's your name, sir?
Sam Oderness.
Sam Oderness, okay.
The plan is to add five sites on the north side of County Row 19, and, uh, they're only gonna be used for work campers or, uh, other workers for the campground, so we don't have to have them onsite if they stay in a camper and stuff. Uh, they're gonna have fifty amp, uh, pedestals, water, and sewer, it's gonna be a two thousand gallon holding tank that will have pumped by mosses, and it's got alarms on it and everything, so...
You have places to go with it, to spread it, just to...
Yeah, I already have moss doing several other tanks for us, so...
Um, I just might add, too, um, the flood plain that's down there along that creek, um, this actually is out.
Yep.
The flood, out of the flood plain where these campers, campers will be going.
It's right next to my, my new maintenance shed, that's over on the side.
I don't know, Bob's got some pictures here, I don't know if I wanna, you guys wanna maybe just look at them? This is about where the, this is the shed he just talked, and then right here is where these...
So you already have the shed built here, huh?
Yep, and it will, it'll be, this will be the area, we have it as storage right now for campers, okay.
And so, you're pouring a kind of deep pad and all that?
No, no, it's just gonna be a gravel pad, and then grass, it's gonna look like a...
Yeah. You putting on any rock concerts or exhibitions down there?
Very quiet down there. Our demographic's a little different for that shit.
So you already own that land, how mu, you own, uh...
Yeah, we own this whole forty here, and then there's another, there's a couple other forties, I think it's like two hundred and twelve hours.
Right, that you own down there?
Yeah.
How did you guys do with all the flooding in that, uh...
Oh, we had it totally rebuilt last year. We replaced everything, had us every electrical pedestal, lost a major bridge, twelve campers, three cabins, punched them. Only thing that didn't get hurt was our main building and the pool. Everything else had two feet or plus of water on it.
Yeah, I didn't kinda know that area down there, I wanted to...
I got her back, though, so...
Okay. Good passing back, and keep them in the file.
You gonna do that yet this fall, build those there?
Yeah, and end of October, probably.
And the camping quiet's down, then you can do something else.
Mm-hmm. We can have a plan on doing anything this spring, so, do it when we have...
Road bans.
Yeah.
So how many sites are you putting there, again?
Five.
Five sites? All on that side of the shed, I think, yeah?
Are your plans, do they, do you have to go through the health department with those, or?
I don't think so. We, I talked to Bob, and he said we didn't have to do anything with that, 'cause it's just holding tanks, and we don't have to have, like, soil boring or anything like that.
But I mean, like, for the state health department, do they have to approve these, or?
I don't think so. They approve our cabins, but they don't have to approve sites.
Okay.
And they, they come down every year for inspections.
Right.
To make sure we're running back flows and everything's, I guess, to code.
So are these units, once you put them on, these sites, they're gonna stay there, though, right? They're gonna be for your workers?
Yeah, they'll be there.
It's actually temporary housing, or what?
It's like a, I guess you'd call it a seasonal campsite, I guess. They're not gonna be there all year long.
You rent them out, probably between, like, May and October, or something, and...
Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Yeah.
That's usually when I have them come in.
Your workers?
Yeah.
But you'll own the camps, campers and the camp sites?
I won't own the camper, it's their own camper.
Well, the workers own?
Yeah, they, it's usually a retired couple that comes from down stuff, and they just helping out with a couple things.
And they, in the season, they pull up and leave, huh?
Yeah, they head back some.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, what kinda sewer do you have on this site? Do you have, like, is it a mountain?
Tank.
Did you go out and look?
Tank.
It's a holding tank.
Holding tank.
Two thousand gallons. Is it big enough for five units?
Oh, yeah.
It'll hold. Actually, I assume Rick has seen it, so...
Yeah, he's got everything, uh, he's got the sewer plans and everything that's in here for the holding tanks.
And I bet we won't pump it more than once a year. I added storage tanks this spring, and I only pumped those once a piece, and they were full camp sites, so...
How do you get water over there? Do you have a well?
I already have water over there.
Oh, yeah?
From, uh, where the...
Maintenance shop.
Maintenance shop, there's, we board underneath the highway, early 20th of the road.
To get a water line over there? Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there anyone here that wants to comment on this application? No? Okay, Rick, you wanna read the findings?
Criteria for granting conditional use permits. Planning commission will not recommend a conditional use permit unless they find the following, findings of fact. One, does the proposed use conform with the county land use plan? Does the applicant demonstrate a need for the proposed use? Will the proposed use degrade the water quality of the county? Will the proposed use adversely increase the quantity of water runoff? Are the soil conditions adequate to accommodate the proposed use? Have potential pollution hazards been addressed, and have standards been met? Are adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities being provided? Are adequate measures being taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use? Are facilities being provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazards which may result from the proposed use? Will the conditional use be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already provided, permitted? Does the establishment of the conditional use impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area? Are adequate measures being taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result? Is the density of the proposed residential development greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood, or greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district? Uh, fourteen, fifteen, are adequate specific conditions and other such conditions established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare?
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Uh, Dan, I have a question. Um, why, something like this comes to us, why, why is it a CUP instead of an interim use?
Because I think in our...
How do you, how do you, what makes it turn into a...
Well, you're talking something that's existing and gonna...
Well, we've already, we got interim use now, we didn't have this when I first started.
Right.
Well, I, I think in our description when we passed this here, I, I think the campground, a lot of this, commercial campground is a conditional use, not an interim, we didn't put it in there.
It's not un...
If you read, if you read that new book, you know, you guys just passed it in a couple months ago.
I've seen the new one, yeah, yeah, I'm trying to remember, I thought campgrounds are in interim.
No, no, it's, 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 commercial campground is still a conditional use, not a, not a, you know, that's the way it should be.
Yeah, okay.
That's the way it should be.
That's why, I just wanna make sure that we're doing right, man. That's, I'm just questioning, and no, no problem with the people?
Yep, yep. Okay, any other comment? Okay, if I have no other comment on the findings or the criteria, um, entertain a motion one way or the other?
I will make a motion to approve this conditional use of campground with all state, local, and federal permits.
Do you hear a second?
I second it.
Alright, second it, okay. We have a motion made and seconded, made by Glenn, seconded by Charlie, to recommend that this application be approved, subject to all state and federal regulations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Now, this will go to the county board on October 7th, and, um, they meet usually in the morning, and I, starting at nine o'clock, and Bob will take your application to them with this recommendation.
Okay. Would you mail the permit, then, after?
Yes, everything gets mailed to you. You'll get a re, we'll, they'll need to record the conditional use after the board approves it, so it takes a few days in there.
Okay, can I get it mailed to the address of the campground?
Yeah.
'Cause I got this thing mailed out to South Dakota.
Sure.
And if I get it, I guess it's just one less step.
Yeah, okay.
Everything's gotta use.
We'll make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. You guys wanna take a look at the minutes, or glance through them for a second? Maybe you already have? Any comments on the minutes from last meeting? If there are no, uh, comments or corrections to the minutes, then entertain a motion to approve them.
Also who?
Garland, seconded?
Also who?
Rick, seconded? We have a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as, as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, the zoning permits. I'm gonna take a minute to look over the zoning permits, see if you have any questions on them. Was it Porter Solson built the, after the fact, the shed, or?
Yeah. Triple fee.
Nathan Wurden, where's this, Houston Township, where is?
Oh, I made a mistake, sorry, that's Caledonia. Green Acres.
Green Acres?
Good eye, Glenn.
Huh?
Good eye.
So it's Caladonia, Tulsa?
I know the guy.
It says Houston.
Nathan Worm.
Yeah. Sir, can I ask you something?
Sure.
This, uh, forty U sixty-five, it said denied on it. Can I have the owner, must have been approved?
We have to give it a number because the payment is kept. The seventy-five dollar application fee is kept.
Okay.
So we have to assign it a number, but you know what happened there, right?
Um, not...
Well, SWCD went out with Bob and he wanted to build the shed up on top of a pond dyke or whatever.
Oh, yeah. Um...
It wasn't a good spot.
Yeah, what he was doing is, yeah, he, there was some other spots there, but he wanted to put it right on a pond dyke on the bank.
Jeez.
And they looked, they said, you get a washout or anything? No, so they, they ended up denying the location where he wanted it.
'Cause he didn't want any other spot, no. The application should be covered, I'm going out there and then...
Yeah. That's right.
He isn't gonna build anything then at all?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
But the fee goes towards...
Covering the cost and expenses.
Cover the cost of them going out and doing a site and doing them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, any other questions on the zoning permits?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
Um, forty-two fifty-seven, Paul Olson and, um, uh, Portius Olson, the after the fact ones. Are we, um, charging the double for this? Triple?
Triple.
Okay. And have we been doing that, um...
It was double. We've been always doing double.
Since July now, it's triple because of the update to...
Okay.
Yep.
And I guess just for myself, um, the oddball is that a fifty by a hundred and sixty, is there a reason that... I mean, did Portius have a reason he didn't apply for a permit, or?
Hmm?
Did, did...
I didn't, no, some people are still confused with egg buildings not needing permits.
See, it used to be exempt.
Egg buildings were.
Yeah, up to, how many years ago when you start? It wasn't that many years you would start charging.
No, about fifteen years now.
It's been fifteen years?
Yeah. We put egg buildings out, under permits now.
So you guys just automatically do the, add the fee then?
Yeah, it does.
They're, they're, they know that, I mean, when, 'cause he, he already started it, so.
Yeah, how after the fact are you saying? I mean, like the months or...
Well, I mean, he got...
The one you catch them, I mean, it's...
You get a call on it and he'll...
You can go out there a year after and find out they built it.
We have. I mean, there's some times that are totally built and...
Assessors will catch up with it eventually.
Yeah, you can't keep track of them.
But that could be five, six, eight years for the assessors.
Yeah, but we don't know everything.
It shouldn't be, but it, why not, because there's so many?
Well, a lot of times, like I said, the assessors will, all of a sudden they'll come in and go and, well, we just found one and out you go and...
So what is the cost of a building permit for an egg building, seventy-five dollars? So then you charge them three times that?
Three times that.
Any other comment, questions on zoning permits? Okay, if not, then entertain a motion to recommend approval.
I move that we approve the zoning permits.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Glenn seconded it? Motion made and seconded to approve the zoning permits. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
We got some people here for other business.
Okay, there's some other business, sir, you wanna, ma'am?
Um, maybe just a little history.
Go ahead, sir.
They bought the property from...
Joyce Betts.
Joyce Betts, and that's on County Twenty.
Okay.
Um, there was an eighty there. Joyce ended up building a brand-new house and the old house is still standing, but the old house is supposed to come down. They had called me today and I, and I guess we were sitting there talking and, and Bob had indicated to them to probably come into the planning commission and see what your thoughts are on it. Um, and I'll let you maybe describe because I don't wanna, I mean, you guys, you and Bob had done some discussions that I guess I was not aware of and I just soon, maybe you can explain everything and...
Can you state your names first? Yeah.
Dan and Roxanne Schlike.
Okay, Dan and Roxanne Schlike, yeah, okay.
Like, you kind of summarized it very well. That was gonna be my opening.
Sorry to hear you in thunder, though.
Yes, now I gotta rethink. So, so anyways, at the, um, early, late last year, we purchased seventy-nine acres and Joyce kept one acre on the front forty, okay? Right above the old house. At that point, we had already signed a purchasing, purchase agreement, but when she built her new house, she said she was gonna tear down the old house. Well, at that point, she really didn't have, that wasn't her maybe right to say that. So anyways, but she built the new house in the front, which was planned. So now, as she's out there, she still has cattle on our property and stuff. So we're hoping to let our son live in the old house. We realize we have to put a new septic system in a mound system. We realize that. We've kind of already gone through the testing and stuff for that part of it. So, um, before winter comes and we have to kind of do things with the pipes and stuff, Bob had actually suggested we come to you guys and see what your thoughts are on it, um...
Okay, this, this old house is in the same quarter-quarter as the new house?
Yes.
Yes.
It is.
Well, it was explained to Joyce that it would have to come down and it was on her permit that it had to be removed. Right, yep.
It's on the same quarter-quarter. Now, you bought the property around that one acre?
Yep.
Right. And you were aware that she was building a new house when you bought the property?
Yes, we were.
Yeah. And the agreement when she built the new house is that the old house had to come down?
I didn't know that though.
You didn't know that though, huh?
No.
Yeah.
I think you guys were in last...
I talked to you on the phone.
Yeah, well, I think you were in last, or somebody was in last fall. Talked about it, that all the water for the, the cattle and the houses and everything goes through.
Goes through my house, yeah.
Goes through that house. So I'm gonna have to tear it, you know, I'm not gonna get all the water. This was in fall and then things were getting ready to freeze up, so.
So we just requested that we, Bob suggested we get your thoughts before we do anything drastic with the pipes and everything else.
So...
If we can keep the house and keep it heated and have somebody out there kind of as a, um, you know, helping Joyce with her cattle also, 'cause she still has cattle out there.
So are you renting land to her to, for her cattle?
Exactly, just, we're just letting her use the, the pasture and stuff.
For...
Her cattle.
For how long and stuff?
Whatever she, she can just, it's, it's a family farm here.
Okay, all right. So how far into this quarter-quarter are these houses? Are they in the middle and the edge, or where?
They're right out by the road. Both of them are right on the road.
And the quarter-quarter land line is, I wonder where the forty-acre line is there? Probably doesn't matter.
Probably be the road. You show them where everything is.
I think probably across the road is probably a different...
That's hers though, but it's a different...
Yeah, but I mean, it's a different four.
The road cuts the four.
Yeah. There's actually a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty acres across the road.
So it's right smack dab in the middle of the quarter, quarter-quarter, most likely.
Yeah. So right up here is the buildings. So she built like right, right up here, but the road and the other house, yep.
Yeah, you own the front forty and then there's another forty in back of that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and she just has the acre off of that blockboard.
She, ma'am, she just, she just heard, she just built her new house where, is it right?
Uh, it's, Dan, do you know the...
Um, it's right here.
And the house is...
It would be about right in here.
Where the driveway comes in, it's right, yeah, right in this front corner.
Right in here.
She has like seventy, seven point nine, point nine acres here, right in this square.
Less than an acre.
And the old house is right here.
Is this the driveway right here?
Right, where the trees are is where the old house is.
This is coming from...
It was open and it was what she owned, so.
So she, she's like right, I mean, right next to the old property, probably.
And the old house is...
No, you have questions.
Right behind, right in that midst of trees.
Yeah, also.
Are you gonna...
I wanna put them all there.
You wanna put them all there where the cattle are?
I said she was gonna tear the house down, but didn't.
She's got it. Yes, right there, pretty much.
Is it?
Yeah.
Does she, does she have the forty here and the forty back there? The water, um, does she have a...
And the forty comes down here, I'm sure.
Yeah, it goes down.
It's like right in the center of the forty. So what, what are your long-range plans with that?
Well, as long as you, I think it would be a temporary thing. I didn't really even want to put a septic in, you know, but if you guys are gonna make me, I will do that, but...
But, but what are your, what are your plans to build a house later?
Actually, if Joyce would actually die ever, I'm gonna buy that also. I just let Bradley live there. The house is not that great. I'd say it'd last maybe ten, ten, fifteen years, backs.
But you don't have any plans to build a house?
No, nope, never.
And, and this is the only road frontage to this, the year...
This is, this is the main highway, yes, and then our driveway.
And there's no other road frontage to these forty, this back forty, or?
No, that's all.
Okay.
It's all crop land.
Nearest road would be way over where it'd be...
Where the always go in.
So when you bought this place, did you intend for your son to live there?
No, we didn't actually.
You didn't actually intend for him to live there?
And we just kind of thought, God, why tear this nice house down?
Well, she, she actually had knee surgery a couple years ago and so we're looking for...
She's having a hard time getting on the Bobcat, like getting home from school.
They had said that maybe we could get one of those permits for him to...
Hardship?
Hold both there, hardship permit. Um, since she still has cattle and stuff up there, there's no intentions of getting rid of them. Um, unless we, unless we make them, I mean...
So what, what does your son do? Does he have full-time jobs?
Yeah, he works for Weezer Brother Construction.
Okay.
He's a, does all.
And then he would, and then come, he would like to live there?
He likes the farm.
Where's he living now, is he?
He's living at our house right now.
Okay.
What?
You're trying to get him out of your house?
So even if the, even if the old house comes down, she's still gonna take her water?
From us. From that water. We gotta take, we gotta have to dig a whole yard up and dig them water pipes off so we can get it out of that basement. All the pipes are running through the basement for water for all the yards. We're gonna have to do that, put curb stops or something in out there.
Just a little problem.
Yeah.
Let's see, how's your industry?
Unless, you know, unless we have this new interim thing and that, if we could put a period of time, I was kinda like doing like we did. Oh, it's there with the family trust. You know, when this new thing, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of a stretch, but...
What do you think we should do?
I don't know, I'm asking you. You're the man. You're the man.
I'm not the man, I'm just young.
Is there, um, employee housing?
And just leave it, huh?
Is there something about hardship?
I don't know. We don't have all the new ones yet.
Yeah. We've, you've done them in the past.
I don't know if we put that in.
Okay, just a second, we're gonna have some conversation here. Okay, Rick, go ahead.
Oh, I was just wondering, um, is there, uh, any room for employee housing, or...
Well, we, in the interim, as we rewrote them, there is room for hardship.
Right.
Interim permit for hardship.
See, the thing is with this here too is...
What's on a Japan, I mean, that would...
Whatever, whatever date you put on that interim. Or like if he dies, or you can put a certain number of years, one year, two years, whatever you can...
But if, uh, your son gets tired of farming, I mean, I've just...
Well, it... I'm not gonna rent it out to somebody else, I know what I want.
Well, that's the thing about interim use permit, you can put that condition on it.
Right.
When he moves out or leaves, it's not being lived in.
Right, then the house has...
That's, that's one of the advantages of that interim, that's the use permit.
Well, and this here too is a blood relative, I mean...
Right.
So I mean, you're, you would have some justification sitting there for the hardship and everything.
Mm-hmm.
She would be your aunt, right?
Yeah. Lesson learned, don't get involved with that.
No, no, I wouldn't say that.
Don't do transactions with that.
Well, I would say if you go back and talk to Bob and probably apply for an interim hardship permit, uh, and it would be written, that probably there'd be conditions put on it that only your son could live there and if he ever moved out?
Definitely not.
Yeah.
Well, we still have to probably...
You still have to address the septic and everything else.
I think when Bob wasn't here tonight, and he's the one that's really kind of the guru on this interim thing and that, and...
And he's kind of, he's been, you know, he's, we've kind of gone and it kind of seems like it goes and then maybe it stops a little bit 'cause we, you know, he's like, oh, you better check with you guys. I mean, we felt like we're kind of on path to getting there, but, you know, I understand.
So now, what, what would be the relationship between your son and then, and...
Joyce?
Joyce, I mean, she's a...
His great aunt.
Great aunt. So what if a year from now Joyce sells cows and he's not really needed there to help her?
Well, he's actually still gonna be needed there to follow the smoke for the yard and stuff in the winter time. And he helps me with the hay out there.
You guys will probably put your own cattle, well, you got horses, I know you have to have a place there.
But see, if, um, you know, it, we, it might be written to the point where it's to your son, or your son can live there. Now, but you're the, you're the owner of the property.
Yes.
So then the interim permit's gonna be given to you.
Right.
But then conditions would probably put on it that's for your son to live there, but then, yeah. And, uh, also if Joyce would go to assisted living or something...
We'd probably end up with a new house.
All right, then this house would have to come down.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be, the permit might run as long as Joyce is there if she has to go to assisted living or something. I mean, that's one way to do it.
Are you comfortable spending the money? Um, I think you said, uh, there's gonna be a mound system put in? Are you comfortable spending the money within the back of your mind thinking that the house could come down and you'd have this mound out there?
You know, good, very good question, 'cause that's kind of what we've wavered on and that's what we've asked Joyce. You know, how, how long do you expect to have cattle out there? You know, how, how long, I mean, are you thinking five years yet? Because then we kind of, then you kind of go through the, you know, the cost to put in the mound system and fix up the house a little bit, um, to rent. So we've kind of gone through those numbers, um, and feel it's, it's, it's just as feasible to do that based on the pricing we've received for a mound system.
I got a question.
Rick, do you have to, I mean, could they apply for limited use, I mean, one person, I mean, for a holding thing? I mean, a holding thing could probably last them all year.
Could.
And those are some of the things that originally started, and that's kind of why, why we thought, I think Bob just said, come to you guys, because we actually went down that road, too.
Can we pump into her grain field?
No, I don't think so.
She, her system was designed for that, no.
For the house.
I mean, if we made it bigger, a grain field bigger?
I don't know, well...
Is that a mound system? Does she have a mound?
It's right between the two houses.
Right between the two houses?
I'd be, I don't think that'd work, you'd be adding the bedroom to a mound system and to tear it apart.
Yeah.
I think probably your own system, otherwise you get more involved and stuff there that I guess I would recommend. This does go that you have your own thing, and then when it's done, it's done.
You'd be getting more involved with your relatives.
Okay, we'll relay this to Bob, then.
Yeah, and we'll talk, and I think we'll probably have to have, you know, among the board here and that, think about it a little more and discuss it a little more and see how... We, right now, I guess we kind of lean toward what we've been talking here, but we can't really say that that's the way, the way it's gonna, gonna, gonna be when we get checked into this thing a little bit further, because this interim thing is pretty new, I'll have to look at the language in it. And I, I think it was written very well, and with a lot of good intent in that for, you know, to be able to do some certain things like this. And so we'll look at it with an open mind and see what we can do, you know? That's my suggestion to the board from here.
And I don't know if you realize, if you do apply for the interim use, you will have to have a public hearing. You will have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing, you'll get published.
I would suggest is probably within the next week or so, I would come in and have Bob fill out the paperwork and get all that stuff going, because there's timelines that, that all have to be met, so if you want to meet October's timeline, you probably should start right away.
Is there anything more you could suggest for us that we...
Well, just, I would go for the interim permit under the hardship.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, he's the county attorney.
Yep, thank you.
Land use attorney.
Okay, we're just showing this to you guys. This has come up on our study committee. There was a, we were having discussions, we had one commissioner thinking that you could add, you could modify conditional use permits without their permission, but we got a clarification that no... Well, you can read the letter and come up with your own interpretation here, but basically, Mr. Squire says that...
You cannot do it.
You cannot do it, yeah.
I mean, I don't think...
Well, that's what we said.
I don't think it takes a really attorney to figure that out.
I don't, but some people have to see it in writing.
I know, I know, but I mean, it's just common sense would tell you that.
Yeah.
Interims are handled pretty much the same way and that. And the way I read this and that, that they can be modified or changed, but it has to be with a violation, and the, what is changed on the permit has to be to do with the, whatever violation was on the thing. You can't just add a whole, whole boatload of them.
We're just passing this out for your own information, because we deal with conditional use permits all the time, and I just want you to file this in your file, and question ever comes up again, you got something in writing, and you got some court cases, I mean...
This came up as a stumbling block or a matter of discussion in our ordinance writing thing. This is why this is here, and it also pertains to the conditional uses and interims, you know, clarifies what, what happens to the existing ones. When the new ones are put out there, you will put on whatever conditions you wish, and that's the way it is going forward, but you can't go back and do things to stuff that is already in existence without, without a violation.
Even the renewal ones, every five years renew it, you renew it to same conditions as before, right?
And we're changing that from...
We're gonna change some of that stuff, too.
We're gonna change the renewals to registration, not call them renewals.
But, but they can, but you can't put more, more conditions on them, can I do that?
No.
Not without a violation, right?
Except... Except, the DNR now is claiming that if the county board has any action on it, it opens it up so they can come in and put on some new requirements.
Any action, can you define that?
Like if, like what we do now is we renew a permit on a mine or whatever, or whatever conditional use, you know, like every five years or whatever thing we see, even interim, even housing for seasonal workers and that. And if it goes back through the county board, and they approve, approve this thing, it's considered by the DNR's new terminology, it's considered a new permit.
See, this is how they're, I think...
Also, then they can still get involved.
Then they can get involved, or whatever.
I see it as they're using this as a window, say we have an existing mine out there, and it comes up for a five-year renewal.
Who's the date, though?
Let's just say the county, let's just say in the county, we have an existing mine there, sand mine, whatever, and it comes up for its five-year renewal. The DNR now is saying that if the county board acts on it, has any action on it, then that, that opens it up for them to come in and apply, there are no rules to that one.
Constitutes a new permit.
Now, that, that might get tested yet in court, but that's, that's where they're coming from now. I think that's part of the justification they're coming up with on the, on the Ericson mine, my theory.
Well, I'm sure that's probably it, and I hope they do get challenged in court, and I only hope...
Go ahead, finish and then I...
I think we should just, the Ericson mine, I mean, that's kind of out of our hands, and...
It is, but...
It is, it is, and it'll get settled in court, but this is talking, this isn't about the Ericson mine. This is any conditional use or interim permit. We understand that that's it.
And how's what was criteria that the DNR said they had that power?
Pardon me?
How did the DNR say they had that power?
It's just, it seems to be, just seems to be arbitrary. Just seems to be, at this point. I mean, I haven't seen the legislature, I haven't seen anything from the legislature that gives them the authority, but...
Well, the thing is, what happened here, and it was a reaction to the frac sand mines coming in, they, they passed this, what they call this new trout stream setback, yes. That's what they're applying to mines that had, now, new mines and everything else. That's how their approach to address a lot of the mine issues. And I think that's their stand, you know, when it comes to, you look at the existing mines, if it goes through the board, rather than, say, it comes into the zoning office, we go through and do the inspections and everything else, and the history of it for five years, we go through everything, and there's no violations, it'll be an automatic renewal going through the office from here on in, rather than going to the county board. If there's no, you know, I guess any violations, or we don't hear comments of negativity on it...
So you're gonna say, so the county board won't have to re...
They'll be, they'll, will do it like this and say this is, we have approved these permits.
Administration approval.
Administration approval.
Okay. That's, that's the way it should be.
Yeah, on existing mines.
Gets us out of the framework of alleged, you know, they're gonna have to be actual violations, they're not gonna be alleged, or whatever, and that.
That's how we got into this discussion, on the existing permits that are out there, on whether now we can go back and attach existing or new conditions on them, and that's how we got into this discussion, and we basically said, let's have a legal opinion on it, and that's what I called Jay, and I asked, explained everything to him, and what I would wanted out of him as far as a, you know, to do the research on the question that we had.
But I would caution, that I don't think that the DNR's rules, and there's some talk that they're going back to the legislature for clarification, so I don't think all this is just set in concrete yet. I think that they're, they're, they're trying to find a way to handle this deal now. I think, well, anyway, I'm speculating now, and I have no right to do that, but I do know that they are going back to the legislature for more clarification.
Just on that same topic, what I might add is last week ago, I invited down some state people from the different agencies, the PCA, Department of Ag, EQB, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, there was probably six of those people came down to a meeting. I've been, you know, they are writing new rules having to do with mining and extraction, so my, my concern, what I seen was going so, going so far is that their approach was one size, it was gonna fit all, and I could see it coming down the line, it was gonna really hurt us and our small mines. I mean, we depend heavily on, you know, the ag district, farmers, the dairy farmers for the sand, construction for the sand, septic system sand, that what they were bringing down, there was no way a small little mine was gonna be able to open up, because you'd never call, you'd never get your, your cost back out of it in a timely fashion. And when I was discussing this with them, the different uses of sand, they questioned some of it as far as the ag use, they were not understanding why we were using sand for, for ag bedding, so, like I said, we brought them down, and I had three of the mining, mine companies, sand mines here, the Krucos, the Comstock out here, Van Gundy's. I had a couple of different end users as far as, like, Kaldoney Ready Mix was here, Kaldoney Lumber came in, I had a couple dairy farmers here of, that came in also, Matt Handel, and he had wrote a nice article and explained why they use sand for bedding, and the reasons for it was the preferred way to go with, with sand as far as the dairy operations. We had a good about an hour and a half, almost two hours, roundtable discussion, and then we actually went out and took a tour of one of the small mines out, Krucos let us go in, and they had, were looking at it. I gave them the history of the mine and when it was permitted, and they were looking at it, you know, they were figuring it would be a lot bigger than this, and it's not. You know, they, they were interested in the amount of quantity that came out per year, the type of sand this was, and how it's trucked, and different things like that. From there, we went to the Ready Mix, they could see how sand was used as an end use, and some of these, like I said, I mean, they're, they're fresh right rules and not in, not in the trenches yet that they didn't quite understand, and then from there, we went to Wayne Hodick's out here, and Wayne was nice enough to let us come on it, and he showed them the pile of sand, how it was transported into the freestalls, why it's where, you know, how it's cleaned and everything, and how the animals react, and how clean the animals were, where the manure went, the sand went into the pit, how the pits were cleaned out, walked them out, and like I said, we looked at the fields, and they were very appreciative of the tour and everything, and what sand meant to us down here versus the difference between the big mines and small mines. They cannot, they have to differentiate between the two, just like what we're doing here. And they were very interested in how we're going about it on the approach of, of small versus big, and the regulations we're putting in for two, for either side, so, and we're going by threshold, so that's kind of, it sounded like maybe a direction they might be looking at, so, all in all, it was a good afternoon.
It was great that you had them down.
Yeah.
So you can see for themselves what's going on.
Just talking, I didn't talk to any of them, but just talking to Rick and you and Rick here and that, I think this is probably the only county in the state that is using this, as far as I know, using this threshold system to separate the, you know, the smaller stuff, we're, we're going by tonnage and that stuff, and it seems like the ones that we've talked to are, are okay, we give, you know, there's some extra leeway in there for them to grow, and they seem, it, I think, and the ones that I've talked to, it seems like it's a good workable thing, and we'll be able to handle the larger stuff with different regulations. By separating the small and the big and that, we can, we can justify what we're writing. It's not gonna be a ban, I'll tell you guys that right now, because you go to work and you do a ban and that, and you're, you're gonna be in deep doo-doo, because that constitutes taking a land, or it changes the use of your land and that, and you will wind up in court. That's my opinion, from what I have read.
Okay, anyway, just an effort to keep you guys appraised. All right, at this point, entertain motion to adjourn. You wanna keep talking?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made to adjourn, you got a second? Nobody wants a second?
I will.
Oh, you'll second, all right. Motion made and carried, all in favor of adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Getting adjourned. Okay.